You would like to table this to another meeting? That's fine. I will look further into that aspect of it to make sure that there's absolutely no issue. So I'm fine with doing that, although I hate getting percentages, but I'm pretty comfortable with the amendment that was proposed by Dave. But in an abundance of caution, I would be happy to spend a little more time on it, looking at the constitutional aspect if that would be helpful.
And I would like to make a motion to table this so he has more time to review it.
I'll say it, Matt.
Can I say? Oh, wait, you get to speak first, sir.
Hang on. We have a motion to table now on top of the amendment. Motion to table is not debatable. Need a decision, majority of decision. Patty, call it by person.
Do we discuss it?
Nope, it's not debatable.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Gunn?
Aye.
Councilmember Notaro? Councilmember Swope?
Aye.
Councilmember Aki?
No.
Vice Mayor Gaddis?
No.
Mayor Manzo?
No.
Motion fails. We continue the discussion on the amendment.
Well, I haven't really had much time to talk.
You're recognized.
Thank you. Well, side comment. I find it funny that a motion was presented to table to use more valuable resource time when that is always being debated about how much is spent on the attorney. So that was interesting. Second of all, I think we're pretty confident in -- let me rephrase that. I am very confident in Fred's abilities. And if he is happy with the original one, then I am too. If he's also happy with Dave's amendment and he thinks that that is adequate and hits all the points, then I'm happy with that too. Because I just want to put trust in our lawyer that he's doing the best job, not for any one person up here, but for the city. And I believe in him. So thank you, Fred, for -- today's been kind of a volume from some people. So I appreciate you sticking with it and doing the right thing for the city.
So just to summarize, the amendment basically closes the door on any public forum discussing pending litigation or prospective litigation. But it allows us to comply with the Florida statute and Holy Sheen regarding candid litigation. Is that a matter of summary?
Yes, sir.
And you're comfortable with that?
Yes, I am. One of the things that is extremely difficult to calibrate from a lawyer's standpoint is you make every effort you can to seal off any basis for a complaint or any basis for a lawsuit. I am not going to sit here tonight and tell you that you will never have a lawsuit based on this. I can't do that. But I have done my -- one of my favorite phrases. I've done my level best to draft the provision that y'all -- or that I was asked to draft. And I put that on paper. And that -- I'm not going to say it with 1,000% certainty that you're never going to have a lawsuit over it. It's -- y'all remember the sign ordinance? And I hate bringing in something else because it always leads to a can of worms. But the exasperating thing with the sign ordinance is that people all over the country file federal lawsuits over the sign ordinance. And, you know, there's inconsistent opinions on it. And, you know, all I can do is present something that I think will put you in the best possible position in order to have a safe harbor. And then I would also hope people of goodwill would act with goodwill.
I have something else to say. It has nothing really to do with my motion to table as far as confidence. I just wanted to make sure I was clear on that for everyone. It was more about we're throwing something at him at, you know, 9:35 at night. And I wanted to give him the opportunity to research it more so he would have, you know, more, you know, to say confidence in what he's saying. Or not confidence, but, you know, more accuracy with doing some more research. So it was just kind of a, we're throwing something at him at 9:30, you know. So it wasn't anything to do with confidence in his just off the cuff being able to change something. So I just wanted to make sure I was extremely clear on that.
Fred?
Well, this is an ordinance change, so it requires two readings. So if you pass the amendment tonight that Dave has proposed, then this will be the first reading. And then it will have to come back a second time before it goes into effect. So I appreciate you being concerned about making sure we get it 1,000% right. If you pass the amendment that Dave has presented tonight, you can be assured that I will look into certain aspects of this between now and the next meeting. And if I think there's a problem, I guarantee you I will tell you what that is.
Patty, please place this in the record verbatim, following the quote. Standard of legal review for the infringement of First Amendment rights is that it must be a compelling state interest and the law must be narrowly tailored to do the least amount of harm. I do not believe that this ordinance, the way it's drafted now, or even before, fits that. The current ordinance certainly does not fit that. It is unconstitutional, in my legal opinion. And yes, I'm a legal Florida attorney. I'm also a legal New Jersey attorney. I'm also a legal federal attorney in the New Jersey district. I can be admitted into Florida in two weeks. So that is my quote. Please put it in verbatim. This is unconstitutional. End quote. Any other council comments? But now I'm going to go to the citizens. This is only on the amendment. We still have the original, but we're on the amendment only, which is Dave Gaddis's amendment. Any other council comments? Citizen comments? Go ahead.
I can't vote for the amendment because, as you said, Ms. Swope, I mean, you brought it back to the attorney and he says, "I can -- might have a constitutional problem." What words in your mouth? But give me a little bit more time and research. I really believe it should be researched before we vote.
Well, the voting for an ordinance is a two-step process.
I understand that. I'm just saying, let's get away the first time.
Go ahead, then.
You come back next month and say, "Oh, oops."
Any other council comments? To the citizens, finally. No citizen comments. Back to council. I'm going to call the question for the amendment only. I'm going to read only the piece that gets amended, okay? So this is Ordinance 2108. Everything stands. Dave, please correct me if anything I say is not correct. Dave's amendment is as follows. Section 2D. The presiding officer or on the request of the city attorney shall rule out of order any discussion by the city council of matters that are subject of any pending or proposed prospective litigation, pending or prospective litigation, except that the council may discuss pending litigation in accordance with Section 286.011 (paraphrased) 8 Florida statutes. Period. Then the rest of this continues. Section 3, 4, 5, 6, et cetera. That was the change I believe you proposed. You're nodding yes, or I take that as a sign of correctness. Okay, so Patty, we're calling that question. This is for the amendment as I just read. Please call by individual for the amended ordinance.
Councilmember Baker?
No.
Councilmember Gunn?
Aye.
Councilmember Notaro? Councilmember Swope?
Aye.
Councilmember Aki?
No.
Vice Mayor Gaddis?
Aye.
Mayor Manzo?
No.
So we have 4 to 3, and this passes as amended. It'll be going for a second reading and advertisement. See you at the next council. Okay? Item 21. Consideration of Resolution 2021-10, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Bella Beach, Florida, authorizing the city manager of the City of Bella Beach, Florida, to execute and deliver the American Rescue Plan Act Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund Agreement, providing for incorporation of recitals, providing for findings, providing for authority to ratify, execute, and deliver the American Rescue Plan Act Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund Agreement, providing for general authority, providing for recording, providing for copies, and establishing an effective date. This is approval of the resolution ratifying the execution, delivery of the agreement following the September 1st, 2021 deadline. First, we have a motion.
Summate.
Let's go to Notaro.
Second.
Dave Gaddis. Leslie?
I will turn the orders away. Yes, Mayor. Mayor and Council, this is the American Rescue Plan Act. There was a requirement to get it executed by September 1st. And this is just a resolution to ratify that. Just to make a couple of clarifications. There was a date announced that said September 20 -- or I mean, 2026. That is to get all your documents turned in. Everything has to be obligated in 2024. That's what the requirement of the document says also. So that's the clarification. It's $802,868. It'll be given to us in two payments. As of last week, they don't know when they're going to give us the money yet. So at this point, we don't really have a certain date, but everything's been executed and set back to them. They have to execute it, then what they told me in an email was in a few weeks we'll see the money. So then we'll have to do a budget amendment at that time and decide what we'll use it for. So we're asking for you to approve this resolution. And you have a copy of the agreement.
So you've already signed this, correct?
Yes.
So why is our resolution saying to execute it? Shouldn't that be stricken in both locations? You've already signed it. You're ratifying what you did. You didn't do anything wrong. You did everything right. Okay, I have no problem with this. But I want to make sure the resolution reads properly because we're not executing. It's already been executed. The council's ratified it.
Are you asking the question, "Why is it written the way it's written?"
Yes, it is. Yes, I am.
Because I didn't know it was signed.
Okay, well, that's what it says here to our packet. So, yeah, it has been signed. Due to the September -- this is Lynn Reeves to the mayor and city council, August 23rd. Due to the September 1st, 2021 deadline set by the Bureau of Recovery, Florida Division of Emergency Management for Florida Municipalities to execute agreement, city manager Reeves has executed the agreement. So again, not saying he did anything wrong. He did it right. We wanted to get this thing signed. We're going to ratify it tonight. I'm sure we'll go 7 to 0. I just want to make sure the resolution is legally proper here. Should we strike "execute" from both locations, Mr. Riley? Would that make it legally correct as to what we're intending to do here tonight? Since it's been executed?
Yes, to be 1,000% legally accurate with the factual situation, you can amend it by striking "shall execute" or whatever the language was.
Somebody want to give me an amendment on this?
I would amend it to say ratifying the city manager's execution of the agreement.
And I suggest we just say, "Take out 'to execute' and 'execute'." It's in there twice if we do that. I think it's compliant unless Mr. Riley tells us otherwise.
That's fine.
No, I just want -- it's Leslie's motion, so she has to agree.
Whatever we need to do to make it proper, make it safer.
You'd strike out "execute" or?
Striking out the "to execute" and striking out "execute." Good, second? Second, Frank Bankard. Okay, any discussion? Citizens on the amendment? Back to council. Leslie de Terra had the last word. No? Okay, so I'm going to read it as revised and then we'll -- we can do this as a voice -- resolution, can we do it as a voice vote, Patty? Or we have to do individual?
Individual.
Individual, okay. Consideration of Resolution 2021-10, a resolution of the city council of the City of Bella Beach, Florida, authorizing the city manager of the City of Bella Beach, Florida to deliver the American Rescue Plan Act Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund Agreement, providing for incorporation of recitals, providing for findings, providing for -- providing, I'm sorry. Providing authority to ratify and deliver the American Rescue Plan Act Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund Agreement, providing for general authority, providing for recording, providing for copies, and establishing an effective date. Madam Clerk, a yes vote will ratify what the city manager has done.
Councilmember Gunn?
Aye.
Councilmember Notaro?
Aye.
Councilmember Swope?
Aye.
Councilmember Aki?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gaddis?
Aye.
Mayor Manzo?
Aye.
Passed 7 to 0? Patty, I don't know if the copy that I have up here will be amended for tonight, but if you need me to sign it, I can certainly swing by and sign it for you.
Does it signature page?
I'm not sure. Yeah, I'm not even sure if I have to sign it, to tell you the truth. I probably do. Yeah, I do. So we just have to strike it. Plus, you want to strike it. I mean, I have a couple of minutes afterward. Up to you. Your call. You can decide later. All right. Item 22. Authorization to execute a purchase order for the 22nd Street Bridge Repairs. This is authorized contract to Pro Shop Concrete and Bridge Masters Construction LLC for $11,035 based on 2021 F.Bridges Inspection Report. This is proposed by city manager Reeves. First motion?
Summate.
Ms. Swope, second.
Second.
Dave Gaddis. Rita?
Go ahead and defer to the city manager.
Mr. Reeves?
Yes, Mayor.
You've got a mic.
Mayor and Council, this is to do repairs that were recommended by FDOT. 22nd Street Bridge comes under FDOT inspection every other year. They provide us a report, which they did in January of this year. Per their recommendations, we went out to several companies and we've provided you with that documentation behind it. And there is money in the current fiscal year budget. We have a savings account to do repairs on both our bridges in the city. And so I'm recommending approval of $11,035 for Pro Shop Concrete and Bridge Construction to do the recommended repairs to the bridge. And we've provided a copy of the report to you also.
Counsel, any comments?
Send our strategic plan, fix the bridge.
Mr. Reeves, I saw a variety of different prices and stuff here, and some were comparable, some were an example. The GCC people don't set up for traffic control. Pro Shop does set up for traffic control. I think the other guys, Bridge Masters, had mobilization, traffic control. Are we comparing all these apples to apples? Because there was a big disparity in prices over here. And I just want to make sure, you know, it was clear that one of the bids was much better than others. But I just want to make sure we're comparing apples to apples.
Yeah, we're comparing it based on what they submitted to us. They were given the report and said, told that they should give us a proposal based on the report requirements. Some of them, as the one came back, $76,000, which was pretty ridiculous. And then the other ones, let's see. Trying to look to see where the other one is. The other one had a mobilization fee of, I think it was $10,000 upfront for the work they're just mobilizing. So that's one of the reasons why we're recommending Pro Shop Concrete.
Mr. Reeves, I'm confused. I'm very confused. Because Pro Shop Concrete is $76,005 and GCC is $11,035. So you want, I think, GCC, do you not?
I'm reading the sentence below. It is GCC.
Okay, so our explanatory is wrong. Our motion is correct. So you want GCC?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to cross that out. I'm going to reread that when we vote on it, okay?
Okay.
So Pro Shop Concrete is out. They were 70s.
Pro Shop and Bridge Masters are out.
That's my thought, okay. That was one of my questions.
I just read the lower sentence.
I saw it. Don't worry. I just want to make sure you're getting who you want here. You want the $76,000 one that's on. We need to fix the bridge.
And they've done repairs for us before. They were -- they have been.
Given the volume on that bridge, we don't really need flagmen and stuff like that. They can safely do it without it, right?
No, they -- no.
Okay. All right, council, any other comments? Citizens, any comments? Back to council, last word, read Ms. Swope. Penny? Item 22. Authorization to execute a purchase order for 22nd Street Bridge Repairs. This is to authorize a contract to Bridge Masters Construction for $11,035.
General, general.
I'm sorry. Yeah, it's still wrong. Okay, my mistake. I'm going to reread that last one. Authorized contract to GCC, General Cocking and Coatings Company, for $11,035 based on 2021 F.Bridges Inspection Report. Correct, Mr. Reeves?
Yes.
Okay. Yes vote passes this. We can do this as a voice vote? Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? 7 to 0. Mr. Reeves, you're authorized to move forward. Unfinished business -- I'm sorry, 22A, Frank Bankard. Frank, would you mind? I didn't write down exactly what you want this to be titled. So would you please just introduce this as one sentence, if you could?
12th Street Lot Access, Beach Access Parking Violations According to our Local Agreement.
Okay, do I have a motion or a mixed motion? Second?
Second.
Second, I heard Robbins. Robin, go ahead. You have the floor.
I'm going to pass. Sorry, this job doesn't pay well. I only have three copies. Anyway, last Thursday, when I started this in Florida, it was out of order. I apologize. I was going north on Call Ohr around 9:00 a.m. and there was, in our 12th Street Lot, two tractor trailers and 130-ton crane, all parked using up more than half of our lot. On my way back, the crane was being built, which I, again, saying that the counterweights, the block, and accessories were being put on. The access path to the beach was further blocked because you had to back the trailers in to get the counterweights, et cetera. I went home, got my cell phone, took some pictures of this and sent it to our city manager and clerk. The reason? Who would issue a permit on a parking lot which was built for cars that generally weigh under 3 tons, now supporting a crane that weighs 100 tons? Okay, 100 tons. The two tractor trailers coming in probably had counterweights. Now, they were legal, okay? Everything was legal because they had permits to move the crane. Okay, they were probably around 80,000 pounds, which is 40 tons. All right? Crane weighs approximately 55 tons unbilled. All right? The reason the two tractor trailers were there was to carry the counterweights, as I explained. Permits are required by DOT on equipment vehicles that are oversized and overweight before movement on the roads. Further permits and costs may be required for bridges if one is permit wrapped. These permits all have heavy costs associated with them. Each time these pieces of equipment are moved. Reason being, they tear up the roads and bridges. Hence, compensation is collected before they -- Permits are further are on specific roads and routes, meaning travel is addressed on roads which do not have weight requirement restrictions. We just passed item 22 and ordered or amended to have a bridge rebuild. Right in there, it says traffic restriction based on road rating analysts. Posts are not required. Structures posted at both approaches. Single-unit truck, 11 tons. Combination, 19 tons. We had over 200,000 pounds on that lot in just one area. All right? That's why they have these restrictions. Getting back to the email I sent to our city manager, he emailed back and noted, "We only issued permits for our residents and would have no involvement or knowledge of other permits." So the question is, who would issue a permit to allow this type of weight on our lots? Other question would be, was it an event communication contract entered into to assume liability in the event of loss or injury? Now, the pictures I passed out has a circle on the outrigger. That was blocking the beach access. Okay? So it was a tripping hazard. Further, if you look at the crane, the outriggers are not fully extended. When the outriggers are fully extended, when the turret, or the upper structure, it's called, turns, the counterweights will not go past generally. And on that crane, it is the upper structure. So when the crane swung, it was completely into the access path of that beach. All right? Now, where I come from, we would have it called an oiler and apprentice watch. Down here, they don't. All right? I'm not going to get into right to work and everything else then. But what I'm saying is, that type of weight, okay, will destroy our parking lot. All right? We just settled, and it was brought up tonight, the lawsuit at Morgan Park for slip and fall. Slip and fall. And now we put up these little signs saying that it could be slippery when wet and sanding out. These are our lots. These are our lots to use. Now, the crane in question, okay, there was another crane there beforehand, but that was on the owner's property. All right? That was probably, I believe, a 20-ton. I didn't really take notice because it's been concerned. When Hurricane Hermine came at 4th Street, they needed a crane for some of the damage. That crane came on the owner's property of the High Means Watermark. All right? Set up on their property. It was on the beach. It performed a service. They could have used a 20-ton hydraulic truck crane or an ATV crane. They put it on the beach. Total width of that crane would have been under 25 feet. Their control line is 20, I think, 4 feet, 5 feet right there. I don't have it exact. But they elected to use our lot. And I don't know why. Okay, well, it's probably because of the cost factor, getting a permit to shut, to move the crane up and down the beach. But I've listened, like I said, to council tapes in the past. And this council was 100% for the defense of this citizen, of the citizens of this town or city a year ago with the beach umbrellas and everything else. And again, I brought up the issue, you know, that we sat down. I sat down with the city mayor. And I was given some kind of an insurance of cleaning up the beach umbrellas, cleaning up the buoys. And there was never an insurance here, okay? Because clearly, Bella Shores has taken an approach that they can get away with this, they can get away with that. And they're actually becoming a bully to us. And I don't know why we are taking it. I really don't know why. I don't know. I'm going to ask the council that we direct our city clerk to -- because the only one I can think of, if we don't know who's issuing these permits, is Bella Shores.
I know who's issuing the permits.
Well, I would like a copy of all these permits.
Okay, you can get them from them. That's a litigation file. But I'll tell you who's issuing the permits. I'll tell you the people who've issued the permits. City Clerk Barbara Caluchin has issued dozens of them. Mayor Schmidt has issued them. Deborah Rosman issued one. And I think that's everyone who's actually issued permits. Well, those are the people issuing those permits that have Bella Shore, lettered, that says it's okay to park here. Those are the three people we have found. Interveners, correct me if I missed anybody who's issuing. Those are the issuers.
Well, the only thing I can find in the Bella Shore minutes is back in May 21st, noted in Bella Shores meeting of Tom Brady's event, is to use the parking lots. And it was asked if we could use those parking lots. And the Bella Shores mayor noted, issuing permits was okayed by council. Is that their council or is that our council? I can't find.
It's not our council.
Okay, well, who gives them the permission, again?
Your own ordinance doesn't give them permission.
Well, I, I, I noted, and, and this is just, I can't wrap my head around this, and until we take a stand, we're gonna keep getting used. And, and when I proposed earlier, and I was out of order, and I don't think I'm out of order now, we need to say, hey, you're parked there, you're getting towed. You're parked, and, and that was actually proposed last year, waste your time.
Because I've done it already. I did it with Debbie Mall, we called the city manager, he didn't even come out to come to the location on 12th Street. We had, we had the police there, we spent hours, they told me to go F myself, the people out there, we got it on video. It's all part of the complaint, Mr. Bankard, it's all part of the complaint. In terms of doing something, there's only one person doing something, and I'm joined by 42 other courageous people, one just passed away, we had four of three.
Well, we could make a stance by saying, the beach umbrellas, we're gonna put them up at 6th Street. If anyone's fined, we will cover the cost. Uh, we can, I believe we can install a buoy at 6th Street, I believe we can install a buoy 12th Street, which would cure unsafe conditions there, okay? I think we have every right, if you read the deeds, says submerged lands, all right? And that's my motion, or my motion is to pick up any cost and to install those two buoys right now. And if possible, if we need to go to court, this council, if this council approves, because we have a lot of the snowbirds, and I'm not taking away from anybody's full-time residency because I have one, all right? But the snowbirds will be coming down shortly, they want to go to the beach, older people need the umbrellas, all right? Let's go to court and get a restraining order on that shade with us.
You won't be able to do that. Believe me, if you could've, I would've. Um, you can't legally, and I won't go into the detail because I'd be giving away legal strategy, just trust me on that it can't be done. There's a reason I filed a verified complaint, that was the precursor of that, you can't do it, okay, trust me, you can't do it.
What about the buoys?
Um, I'm not part of the buoys thing, but I know you have done an incredible amount of work, I mean, I know how, I, I, actually, I don't even know how much work you've done, I know some of the work you've done, and it's incredible. And I'll tell you what, Mr. Bankard, my hat's off to you, okay? Because I didn't know you when you came on this council, I didn't know much about you. Um, your dedication to safety for our citizens is incredible. You have put this city on notice, and you've put the other city on notice, okay, of what eventually is going to be a tragedy, okay? It's just a matter of time, okay? It was so bad the other day, we were home at our house, and Jim said to me, "It sounds like that boat is like almost coming around." And that was probably the one you were talking about, that, you know, they were within several feet of the shoreline, somebody's gonna get killed, it's just a matter of time. Now, you know, I said it before, I can't do civil disobedience, okay? Um, I'm licensed in multiple areas, and I, I can't go and break the law intentionally. There may be people who will do that, okay? Um, and then there's recourse if, if they get pinched by the, you know, by the police on that. But in terms of setting up for safety, if you want motion to, whatever we have to do to get buoys in there, you got my support 100%. I appreciate what you've done here, I went to that 12th Street the other day, there's cracks all over that, that macadam over there, this thing has done a number on there, this is absolutely unacceptable, this is dangerous, and by the way, we have an indemnification agreement as part of our interlocal agreement, if anyone gets hurt on the beach access, Bel Air Beach will pay for it. So when we're derelict in our duties by not forcing people like this to get waivers, by turning a blind eye and saying it's not my job, what is your job? Because the interlocal agreement requires it. And if somebody got hurt on this crane, their attorney guarantee you will read the interlocal agreement and go, oh, it's Bel Air Beach's problem. Imagine, if you're a city, and by the way, I don't know what council signed this thing, worst agreement in history, we are completely liable for everything that happens on those, those easements. We have completely assumed all liability, so if somebody gets hurt here, if somebody illegally parks here and gets hurt, their car gets damaged, anything, it says right in there that we indemnify them. We'll come to citizen comments, we will, I'll get to you as soon as we go through council, okay?
Just, just to clean this up, I have my belly full with the FWC about this buoy permit that we requested have unnecessary buoys and believe was signed in May of 2020, all right? I went round and round with them, I finally said, you know what, the hell of this, I filed an appeal of the, of the buoy permit, okay, on my own, so I'm gonna be, I guess, cast, you know, as a bad child here, okay?
Not by me you won't be, and not by 45 interveners you won't be.
Well, I'm just saying, okay? This, if I'm successful in getting that buoy permit repealed, then the old permit comes back and 17 buoys would be reinstalled, okay? Now, according to FWC, it's unstat, or is the statute language has been changed 12 years ago, all up and down the coast, we'll see the same language in the buoys, all right? But they're now telling us that we have to change our buoy language, okay? It's all nonsense, it's all typical government crap, that they just don't want to get off their dead keisters and brings up. But I really believe that we should throw those two buoys out there at 6th Street, which is ours, and 12th Street.
May I say something?
Yes.
Um, actually, a couple things. You said that, um, you went ahead and dialed the appeal, did you do that on behalf of the city of Bel Air Beach or just you personally?
Frank, Frank Bankard, I used my own email account, I mailed it from my home address.
Okay, so that would be made a public record at this point since it was mentioned, is that correct? We send that to the city so that, okay?
The city should get a copy of my complaint since we filed for the amended, uh, permit appeal.
And then, um, as far as the interlocal agreement and the liability of that clause you were talking about, I've mentioned this before, when so many of the citizens had so much concern about that, maybe we should give them the 60-day notice and bail out of that, so that's an option too. And, um, I am not, I'm sorry, Councilmember Bankard, I am not supporting the police, that's my opinion, it is their property, it's on their tax rolls, not ours, it's on their deeds, not ours, so I'm sorry, I'm not gonna vote that at all, because you're a real big, um, proponent and supporter of not spending the citizens' money, but if you did, you want to spend money to put something out there in a property we don't own, so.
Well, the point we're here, I'm, I'm a proponent, uh, let's have a conversation, I don't, she didn't say anything that was improper, so I'll move that out of order, but, Reed as well, were you finished? Okay, go ahead, Frank.
I'm a proponent of not spending the taxpayers' money on frivolous things, like the sign that's gonna be installed outside, we, we put $3,500 in that budget away for buoys, okay, a year. We just spent, what, $35,000 on a sign, all right? I'm looking for two buoys that will probably be less than $1,000, all right? Which are a safety item, all right? Now, that sign, all right? What kind of safety is that providing the citizens of this town? All right? In fact, you get a drunk trying to read it, he might ride into it. So I am a proponent of safety, and I won't care what the cost is when it comes to safety, you'll see that in the future, but, um, I don't know why you would be against two buoys that would cure where you live and where other people live.
Linda?
I don't think Rita's made any statement against the safety thing, I think what she's saying is there are other issues, you know? What's the rest of the story with respect to this thing? I mean, there are things happening based on this appeal and stuff, basically, the legal standing of this thing, as well as, again, Rita's raising a very poignant question is what's the legality of this thing? Now, we have easements in the parking lot, but how does that expand into?
The dean, the dean claims we have submerged lands.
Is it this easy? Or is there another, is there a rest of the story?
And there was a, well, here's, here's, just to clarify the buoys, okay? Uh, we're, we're working on fixing our buoys so they come into compliance. We sent the, uh, I asked the city attorney to prepare ordinance to, uh, change our ordinance, because currently, it doesn't meet the statute requirements, which Councilmember Bankard is aware of. Things have changed. And we're gonna have to change the wording on our buoys. We sent that to Florida Fish and Wildlife, uh, actually, yesterday, I got, Frank, sent me the ordinance, we sent it up there, uh, he sent it to me over the weekend, but, I think.
Sent it to you last week, and you, you and I turned it around in about a day and a half.
Right. So, we're in the process of getting our buoys in the Gulf, the city's buoys, in the Gulf, in compliance with current statutes, the requirements. So that has went forward, they have to approve the change in the ordinance, they'll send it back to us, then we'll bring it to the city council. As far as Bel Air Shore, and, and I've discussed this with Councilmember Bankard, the, the situation is, and the position of the Florida Fish and Wildlife, or Florida Wildlife Commission is, you cannot go into another city and, uh, get a permit for buoys. When this buoy permit was originally done, 2001?
Frank, 2002.
Two, okay. When it was originally done, both cities went together, Bel Air Shore paid for the buoys in front of theirs, city of Bel Air Beach paid for the buoys in front of our city. Last year, we wanted to update our buoys because we had a lot of them that were missing, we wanted to put them back. So, uh, Bel Air Shore did not want to put them back. And it isn't that somebody took them away, what happens to buoys unfortunately is they break away and they, you may find it in St. Petersburg or out in the ocean somewhere. So, if the current situation is, based on what Florida Wildlife Commission has stated to me, is, we're gonna fix ours, so we're in compliance, we've got the prices, uh, to have a vendor go out, because we don't have the resources. And then every three years, we will have to have someone go out and do an inspection on them, because we don't have the capability to do that. They have stated that we cannot put buoys in a city that is not ours, basically, Bel Air Shore's another jurisdiction. So, what I understand, and I heard about it after the fact from Fish and Wildlife, they asked me if I knew about it, and Frank had already done it, sent the, I guess, the appeal, and I haven't seen the, it does. So, that's what I know about your appeal. Well, the permit of 2002, the permit of 2020 clearly states that any buoy is missing, it has to be replaced immediately, all right? I can't see how 17 got missing all in, in one day, all right? So, I don't know if we were plucking out some of those buoys and putting them in our area or not, I don't know, but we've never been in compliance, okay? FWC has not held us in compliance. Now, all of a sudden, FWC, because I brought this to the attention of them, and it wouldn't back off, threatened us, okay, saying, "We're just gonna make you change the language, or we'll remove your permit and take all your buoys out," all right? Meanwhile, Indian Rocks, Clearwater or Sand Key has the same verbiage on their buoys, all right? So, where's equal protection of the wall here? And, and why are we keep taking these threats from these agencies that do nothing, okay? They haven't, they haven't enforced their own permit, and we haven't really wanted our own permit, and I don't have any of those. But now, we're gonna spend money and change the verbiage of our per, our buoys and allow the other towns to go away with nothing just because I brought this to their attention of a safety issue? And this is, and this is nothing but a safety issue, as you said, Mr. Mayor, this is an accident waiting to happen, all right? And I'm not talking about, you know, a, a brushbird, I'm talking about a possible death. And Bel Air Shore's previous commissioners even said that, one of them said that saves one life, I don't care what the cost is. Commissioner Rosman said, not even a year ago, "Let's put the money from the, uh, pennies for pennies back to get the buoys," all right? So I can't see how they're 100% against it.
Councilmember Bankard, uh, and I don't remember the hurricane, because we get them every year, but I believe it was either Hermine or Irma, one of those where those, we had buoys, they were on 6th Street, I used to swim there every single day, and they, I don't think anybody took them there, we had Hurricane, it was, Hermine was pretty rough, even though it was a smaller hurricane, and those things were gone. And I, and then it was weird, because I think after, maybe Lynn Reeves may remember, I think after Irma, like, one of them came back, it was really weird, you know, but it was in the wrong spot, so it looks like it must've broken loose and maybe was submerged. The other ones, as you go further up towards 12th Street, I, I don't know what happened to those, they all disappeared. But you used to be able to go out in the water, and I know because I used to swim beyond those buoys and come back, okay, I'd do long-distance swimming, and you'd be able to go and you'd be able to see every single buoy in line. Now you can see it in Indian Rocks, but you can't see it here.
Well, the one at 6th Street, okay, got washed down on Irma, to 3rd Street, you're gonna say, well, how do you know it was that one? Well, it had a leak in it and I patched it, okay? So, I went out and patched it, yeah, and, and it was fine, but it still took off, so I knew it was 6th Street buoy.
But in terms of not being replaced immediately, I mean, that was, what, three years, four years ago?
Hermine was what, seven years ago or six?
No, it was in seven, it was like four years or so ago, but it was a while ago, anyway, their derelict did not replace them, yeah, absolutely. Robin, I'd rather have Frank.
Um, I'm all about the buoys and the safety, but I kinda wanna talk about, go back to some issues that you set about a different subject, about the crane. Um, if there's damage to the asphalt in that parking lot, aren't we responsible for paying for it? So, and that May issue where you said the film crew, with some council members thought it was fine because Tommy Boy was, yeah, thank you, well, I like to call him Tommy Boy. Tommy Boy, because he was a big star, it's okay, but I don't agree with that. I contacted Lynn Reeves and sent him pictures, and I actually just pulled up the picture, it was, the parking permit has the seal of Bel Air Shore and is signed by Calucci. Now, my understanding is, they aren't allowed to give out permits. So if they're not allowed to give out permits for Tommy Boy and his friends, film boys, to park there, then they should've been cited or ticketed or something, like, for example, can I on my computer sign a permit and have all my friends park there and walk to my house for a hearty, is that okay? Or would I get in trouble? Because if I can't do it, Tommy Boy shouldn't be able to do it.
Don't waste your time calling the Pinellas Sheriff asking for a ticket, because I got that one on tape, and it's part of my litigation thought.
What was that, Rita, did you say something?
Because... Excuse me?
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, do you want to say something? I'm right here.
You keep saying Tommy Boy and all that stuff, I mean, okay, come on, that was old discussions, old council meetings.
Want to bring up old discussions you like to always bring up? Like money and overspending and how much we pay our attorney all the time? Okay, just thought so, thank you.
Now, let's go back to the, uh, the waste of time that it would be to contact the sheriff. I spent an hour, went, took it all the way up to the corporal level, our wonderful friend Captain Liner, did nothing, absolutely nothing. I showed him the ordinance of Bel Air Shore, I read them the ordinance that says they are not allowed to i- uh, issue permits to anyone but Bel Air Beach residents. We confirmed that the construction companies were not from Bel Air Beach, because guess what, folks? We don't have businesses in our beautiful premier city. And you know what they did? Nothing, nothing.
But Lynn.
Told me they were not going to enforce the law. They said, it's quote, "It's their lots and they can do what they want." And I said, "But here's the law, we don't care." Thanks, Sheriff.
So Lynn, did they contact you for permits to park there, like the film crew?
Yeah. They, someone, not, I don't know who it was, I think it was somebody from Pinellas County, they asked me if we had a parking place, and I told them I would rent them parking spaces in our lot here. And I told them, you know, we'd probably give them some kind of discounted fee for, you know, how many ever days. And, uh, they called me back and said they gotta take it here. So, because I told them I, I had, I couldn't give you parking, I asked them.
Did you tell them that they are not allowed to park there without a permit and you will not be giving them one?
What, I didn't give them any permit.
No, I know, but I'm saying, did they ask permission, you said you don't have control of Bel Air Shore? Because that's incorrect, you.
Well, we...
Bel Air, wait, let's get this on the record. Is Bel Air Shore allowed to write permits for those three parking lots? According to the ordinance, not to their wind, their ordinance.
We only give permits to our residents. We don't give them to anyone else.
That's "we," but is Bel Air Shore, by ordinance, allowed?
I don't know what their ordinance says.
Give me two minutes, I'll have an answer to you. I'm just pulling up Muni Code Bel Air. The answer is no, and I'm gonna read it right.
Well, I'm just saying, we need this on the record now, so all our residents know.
We don't issue permits to anyone but our residents.
No, I know that, that's us, I'm asking them. Is Barbara Calucci's signature is on this one?
Well, then, not yet.
Oh, go ahead.
And why don't we do an information request on all permits issued for this year? And take them to court for the loss of revenue? Or fine them? Why don't we start being a little aggressive and start taking, you know, I don't wanna...
Look, and to another point...
Sounds like a movie, but you never win a fight by keep taking a punch.
Right, well, I sent this picture to Lynn Reeves, too. The parking sign that says restricted parking. Parking only for Bel Air Beach vehicles with valid permits. Police patrol town of Bel Air Shore. Does not say, "And the women of Bel Air Shore," based on who their friends are and construction. Yes?
I have your answer to your question.
Let's get this on the record.
Patty, would you like this verbatim?
I would love a verbatim.
Got it. Please quote, this will be the quote. Section, quote, "Section 30-57 Parking Permits." This is from the Muni Code of Bel Air Shore. "No motor vehicle shall be parked on beach access lots 21, 43, 66." That's Sixth Street, 12th Street, and 18th Street, if you don't know. "Unless such motor vehicle bears a parking permit, a decal or sticker authorizing such parking." Period. "Such parking permits shall only be issued, as may be provided by the Board of Town Commissioners, to the property owners in the city of Bel Air Beach, east of Gulf Boulevard, and shall be numbered. I will buy you a soda or adult beverage if you show me a number on any Barbara Calucci permit." Okay? Um, that's it, the rest is reasonable rules of parking permits and stuff like that. Okay, that's what the law is. So, the answer is no, they're not allowed to do it.
Mayor, is that your end quote?
Yes, end quote, I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry, the quote ended, I'm sorry, Patty. Shouldn't have said anything, that was my bad. The, uh, it ends at... And shall be numbered, numbered is the end quote, thank you. And back to you, Robin.
I mean, it's, Rita, I mean, I, before you go on council, I've been talking about this, about how, you know, if the sheriff is gonna be used more for, you know, enforcing the umbrella issue, then they need to pay more, that I'm tired of always having to deal with Bel Air Shore and being like the redneck stepchild, where we get crapped on, and, you know, just stuff. Like, the pictures of the parking lot being half-fold with film crew for a resident, a non-resident of Bel Air Shore borrowing a house, when I can't do the same thing if someone wants to film a document on me, which would be very interesting. Um, no. But, so, my whole point is, I'm with you, Frank. I, I'm not a fan of bullying, and I'm tired of it, so what, but I don't know what we can do.
I can't buy my son a apartment with it.
Right.
He doesn't live there.
I can't get one for my mom, so she can take my kids to the beach, you do live here.
I'll give you a solution. I've got 43 interveners in this case. Come an intervener in the case. Or, the City of Bel Air Beach can enter into the lawsuit. You don't have to take this. You don't have to take it, we need four votes on this council, and then the City of Bel Air Beach is involved in the lawsuit. City has the right to sue as a property owner. So, you have an option. We haven't exercised it. Only one person has the courage to bring the lawsuit in this city. It's okay. I've 43 people who joined. More are welcome. That's your option. You can do it individually, you can do it as a city. You don't have to take it. But please, don't come in my lawsuit and work against me, you won't be in it very long.
Well, I don't think, as a council member, alright? I should be fighting for the residents, alright? I shouldn't have to intervene in a public or private lawsuit. We, I took it out to uphold this Florida Constitution, the United States. Our Constitution clearly says I have the beach, I have the right to use the beach in high, means high watermark, okay? If I don't do something, they're in violation of my oath, and everyone here is in violation of it. So, I'll make a motion that we do get involved in the lawsuit, okay? Or we sue them, or, not get involved in a lawsuit, that we sue them on behalf of the people of Bel Air Beach for violating our constitutional rights, okay? And putting us in a hazardous situation.
Is that a motion? Yeah, it's a motion. We have a second? A second? Then I don't have to recuse myself, thank you. I was gonna have to hand this over and go through that whole Form 8 again, but, um, because I would have had to step aside on that one. I can't preside over that part of it, but you know what the options are, folks, okay? Glenn Gunn, and then, we're still debating here on council, and I see there's some hands, and we're gonna come to the citizens as soon as we finish your council. Glenn?
Yeah, a couple issues before we come back to the buoy thing is, I found it oddly out of character for Robin to be talking about Tommy Boy. It sounded oddly passive-aggressive to me, according to friends I've heard.
How familiar to you?
Of course, yes. Because he's thrown around a lot. With respect to a lawsuit, the gauntlet's been tossed down by the mayor. The city's council just said, "No, we're not going to intervene in this." So, I would suggest that if you feel that strongly about it, instead of accusing us as a council for not standing up for this thing, why don't you intervene and become part of the lawsuit? I've asked that question myself several times. They speak very strongly about it, but then, that's the end of their involvement in this thing. Coming back to buoys for just a second. I asked the city manager what's the rest of the story, and my understanding is, there's been some trickle-down effect from this involvement with the FWC on this stuff. Basically, they're not just targeting us anymore. They're looking and looking at our neighboring municipalities for compliance. And this thing may mushroom and balloon and affect everybody who, all of a sudden, they have no interest in this thing, but all of a sudden, the FWC's gonna come down and be looking at their permits and buoy placements, and there may be additional costs or problems for our neighboring municipalities. Not all municipalities have buoys. How many of our neighboring municipalities don't have buoys?
I can tell you there's several that don't have buoys, uh, on the ocean side, and there's almost none on the intercoastal, we're one of the few. And I can also tell you that the conversations I had with them about the intercoastal buoys, they could come back and tell us to take them out, because they're not compliant. But at this point, the only one they're looking at is us, because Councilman Baker made calls to them, and now, my understanding, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Frank, but I understand that the staff, any conversation with them any further is with their attorney, is that correct?
Yeah, she, um, she, when she threatened me that she was gonna, and I can't believe she's an attorney, because she puts it in writing, that she's gonna take all the buoys out, because I brought this to the issue, okay? I said, "Then, let the blood be on your hands, okay, with the first injury," alright? And then she immediately called you, okay? So, this is the ridiculous behavior from the FWC. And, like I said, those buoys, the language you're talking about being changed, Mr. Gunn, I think the first time it was changed was in 2010, alright? The permit has to be, as Mr. Reeves says, renewed every three years. So, for over a decade, they approved an unstatute permit. It just kept approving, just kept approving. And their answer is, "Why'd you approve it? Uh, we don't have the staff to check them out." So, if you don't have the staff to check them out, you should give up that right to monitor the permit. That would be an argument I'll make in front of the NAMJ.
Now, to address the buoys, again, the trickle-down effect that, you know, Lynn's alluding to, that it may trickle into other municipalities, good. Because then they'll be safer. That's like saying, "Oh, this one highway has drag racers, and so now, one person complains about, now the cops show up, and now nobody can drag race." Good! So, bring down the trickle-down effect, I like it. They'll be safer for all the other beaches and swimmers and tourists, and, you know, I applaud Frank for being proactive and not reactionary. So, we're gonna wait for the first tourist, the first kid to be killed by a drunk boat that gets too close and then say, "Just do the buoys."
I think the unexpected consequences is...
Oh, I'm sorry, was I not passive-aggressive enough? I was talking, I'll talk loud, if you can't hear me.
Hang on, one more. She has the floor, you're next, Mr. Gunn, go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me? Am I close enough? Just wanna make sure. So, I, I'm all for, I've always been since day one. I tried to get traffic and safety in this thing about speeders on our street, and I was shot down. So, I'm all for safety. So, Frank, I completely support you with everything. You know, the fact that they're threatening you, is showing me that they are seeing their flaws and they can't own up to them, so now it's easier to bully you into hushing.
Uh, Glenn Gunn is next.
Yeah, just caution you, the unexpected consequence, all the buoys come out. All the buoys come out. It's like putting your faith in a bicycle lane on the bridge. They tell us we can't ride on the sidewalk because there's a bicycle lane. Next time you drive over that bridge, look how many skid marks there are up on the divider on the side of the road, protecting that sidewalk from traffic. Going right through the bicycle lane, hitting a guardrail. When, next time you drive that bridge, take a look at the skid marks on there, and it'll blow you away. What I'm saying is, don't put your faith in a buoy or a painted line. It takes a little personal responsibility, and I, I'm for you. I want those buoys in it. I'm not fighting about this, but I'm just saying. You gotta be careful what you, what you ask for and how you do it, because you need the cooperation of those government agencies. You make them mad, or you antagonize them, they're not your friend anymore. They're working against you, they're not working with you or for you. I'm starting to get that impression that we're alienating the people who we need to assist and help us.
Mr. Gunn, for the record, before I sat on council, I contacted our city manager about this issue, okay? I've been a total sweetheart, okay, for months on this. I can show you volumes of emails showing boats two feet away from children's heads, okay? I can show you boats coming in, my neighbors almost hitting them. I can show you videos I've sent to the FWC. All I asked them is to comply with Number 14 of the amended permit, saying if it's a safety violation, the permit must be withdrawn, okay? They more or less gave me the middle finger on the whole thing, alright? So, what am I supposed to do, roll over and play dead? It's just like, again, the Bel Air Shores, about getting the beach umbrellas back. They can't get the middle finger, alright? They're not gonna do it until somebody takes them on.
Mr. Baker, did, uh, Sand Key, did they have the same issue?
They have the same buoys.
Okay, and what...
Same verbiage.
What are they doing?
I don't know. I, I'm not a councilman for Sand Key, but they have the same. I went up and down the coast taking pictures of buoys, the coordinators and everything like that. Like I said, since I retired, as long as I keep that out of my wife's hair, she's happy.
I'm not sure if it's true or not, but I heard that because of the ongoing conversation, they may be pulling their buoys too. I'm not, I can't guarantee that, but...
Frank, a couple things, I think you may have, excuse me, you may have done some of these already. I think some of this I might have heard about, but I certainly will make you my contacts if that's what will help you. You've contacted our representative, Nick DeSigl, you've contacted Senator Brandeis. I think you've gotten anything from these people?
Not from the senator, but Nick, I've talked to a couple times.
Okay, alright, because I could have gotten you in touch with them. I'm surprised you didn't get anything from Senator Brandeis. I don't wanna break sunshine rule here or anything like that, but we can reach out to him where I can get, I mean, I can, I can make a call saying that you're gonna call him or something and have it help. The other thing is, you know, I mean, I'm not gonna worry about what's gonna happen with some other city and whether FWC's gonna come down on us. Take this to the media, that's what we did. Who brought the film crew right to the beach? It didn't matter, they didn't care, but, you know, it doesn't look good, it doesn't play well, and I don't think anybody's gonna look at that video and say, "Oh, yeah, sure, let those boats, you know, ride up on a, you know, ten-year-old kid's head." We have media contacts too, if you need it, so, you know, we can get you in touch. I can get you on the radio, I can get you, you know, and maybe that's what's needed, is for you to start going out, because you are doing one hell of a job, and I totally admire what you're trying to do for this city and this city's safety. I will help you however I possibly can, in here, and to the extent that looks legal outside of here.
Well, I don't, Mr. Gunn, I don't, I don't use the Sand Key Beach, okay? I would hate to see those removed. But that's up to the people of Sand Key, if they wanna allow. I, I still, I mean, I don't, I worked in Black's Law, I worked in Webster's Pictures. I don't understand what a premier city is anymore, right? I mean, I, I understand the definition, but I just don't see it.
Well, we call it our two ourselves, you don't hear anybody else call it. It's us, does, do you? Yeah. Alright, can we go to the citizens? They've been waiting, they wanna talk on this. Jim?
Jim, Vanspoys, Seventh Street, Bel Air Beach. First of all, this is a question, and then you can just answer it after, because I know we can't go back and forth. Any of the buoys that are there, or were there, I should say, were there? Do we still have, maybe the mounts still there? So, all we're doing is basically putting a buoy back and hooking it to a mount, and then maybe do maintenance down the road, if you get what I'm trying to say? On the existing? Second of all, can, that kind of pressure on a parking lot cause a, um, a sinkhole? A sinkhole? Now, think about, falls over, okay? Now, that, those commissioners that we're having problems with, or the one commissioner maybe, and the crane gives way because of the parking lot, and now it falls over on his house. Where's the liability for this city? By subversion, the brand-new house. Where's the liability for this city? Okay? Second of all, OSHA has rules, uh, safety rules. What OSHA, things were presented to this city, showing that they were in place to protect this city for that job site. Third of all, I'm not seeing anything was quartered off, keeping any kind of people from going in that area where that crane was working. So, there was no safety precautions in place, even if they did use the lot, okay? Not at all, okay? Third of all, if anybody who's been here long enough, if you remember the boating accident that happened because of no-wake zone in Indian Rocks Beach, and several people were killed, because somebody did not respect the no-wake zone. They came across with a cigarette boat, right across another boat that was crossing the water, and killed several people. This was several years ago. And just recently, the debris that was in the water, in the water, where somebody got killed and thrown from a boat, okay? So, safety is supposed to be our number-one issue in our strategic plan in this city. And, and this city needs to start taking a look at the safety of our citizens and anyone else that comes into our city that we're gonna be liable for, thank you.
Thank you. Frank, you wanna respond at the end, or you wanna speak? Yoli, because I see Yoli's coming up next, but I don't wanna get into a council discussion, but if you wanna respond, I, I don't have...
I don't know, as she brought up, I don't know if the anchors are still in place there. They may be, the coordinators are pretty clean, okay? We go down there and check.
They may be. The coordinates are pretty clean, okay? We go down there and check. It might be a simple solution, but, real quick, I don't need to pause you, but there is still one buoy in Bel Air Shores, okay? It's around Seventeenth Street. I never known you could be half pregnant, right? Just wait. Are we changing that verbiage? Because the F W C says we can't touch them. It's not in our jurisdiction. How do we go change that verbiage? So is there only one buoy saying no wake zone and the other one saying no swim zone? This is beyond, again, ridiculous.
My comment on the buoys, Yoli with your, Charles T. My comment on the buoys is that I think it's absurd to get upset about protesting the lack of buoys because the consequences might be there with all the buoys. I don't see how anyone can pull all the buoys. And I think the media is our answer, because once the stink gets raised about safety and the lack of safety and cigarette boats coming up and down that beach very, very fast and close to the beach. So, excuse me, I don't know much about the buoy situation, but thank you, because I think that is really, really important. But I am livid about the parking lot. I don't think canceling our inter-local agreement is an answer to the buoy, alright? The answer to the buoy is to stand up to the buoy. We are responsible for any and all damage and liability, folks. Does that not ring? It would strike fear in my heart if I were you. That at any time, anything they do could cause us, this city, to pay. Aside from, let's, let's even leave life and injury on the side. Let's just leave money. So definitely, who gave them permission to, um, to park there? Why weren't all the safety measures that offered the convenience of a private homeowner that has two lots on the beach that can afford to put that crane in his property or around the back? Again, Twelfth Street at least, it's for the benefit of two people. Two private owners, Commissioner Blue and the new homeowner. And that should not be allowed. We control those parking lots. And whether we own it outright or it's deeded to Bel Air Shore, but it's deeded to Bel Air Shore for our benefit. And it says it on the deed. It's for Bel Air Beach residents. So they don't have unfettered control on these, um, on these lots. And what they're doing now is they issue the parking letter and they fold back for the signature so that we can't see who signed the parking lot, the letter, giving permission. But we see the letter, but they fold their signature back. So they are in total violation of their own ordinance. We need to step up. This council needs to step up and send them some kind of warning, do something. We can make them stop issuing permits and we certainly can, I would tell them, I would start telling any of you, everybody, I don't see why we can't have a contract with a tow company. Because the police sadly do not respond. With all respect to the sheriff's office, they don't respond. And when it comes to the umbrella, I'm not even going to discuss it. They, they don't respond. So definitely, they're the buoys. Thank you. Thank you, council member, for the buoy.
Thank you. Any other citizens wish to comment? Seeing no other hands, I'll bring you back to council.
Well, maybe the answer is what she just gave us. We hire our own private towing company. I didn't, I didn't look at that, but that's a great idea. The other thing is, I believe we oughta do an information request on all permits that were issued by Bel Air Shores.
We were there, several councils there. We talked about towing companies because that would be the easiest way to do it. First couple cars that were towed, I tell you what, they cleaned his house very fast.
So, Adley, Mr. Gaddis, I see her in the audience tonight. Jody Shirley came across, I mean, come across, but went across and made the comments and brought the comments of this council to their council. This council had a meeting and most of those suggestions were made by one of our citizens, Rick Shock, okay? About towing, about stepped-up police enforcement. There was a variety of stuff. She made every one of those. Guess what? Goodbye. Thanks for coming. Have a lovely party gift. But remember, I told you earlier, that was the 21st of July, 2020. Our city manager is working with them on the 15th. We had zero chance of getting those suggestions. So maybe you wanna try it again. I'm not going across. I can't speak with them, okay? But I'm not allowed to legally, but other people can. There's nothing stopping you from going over there and making these proposals. Towing is an absolute way of ending all the illegal parking. But the suggestion's been given a million times.
Well, we don't need their approval.
No, I think you do. I think you do.
Well, if they don't have a Bel Air Beach permit on their car, then you can tow them.
Fred Riley can, I, I didn't bring my inter-local agreement tonight. I don't believe I have it, but I believe, is it paragraph five where it talks about strict enforcement? And it's kinda vague who is supposed to be strictly enforcing the permit system. I could read it and easily come to the conclusion that Bel Air Beach is responsible. I could read it and say, well, Bel Air Beach is only strictly responsible for issuing tickets, you know, parking stickers, okay? We certainly know that this crane isn't parked anywhere in Bel Air Beach. And if you could show it to me, I buy you a bottle of your favorite scotch. Because it's not here, because we don't have a crane business in this city. So whoever issued this permit, or if no one issued the permit, then that was improper. I just read you the statute. The police missed this? Guys, I love ya. You do a great job. How the hell did you miss this crane?
It was there till at least 5:00 P. M.
Liner says don't enforce it, so you don't enforce it. Well, Liner is wrong. And I had the guts to say it. And I told him that, so I'm not saying anything behind his back. Remind him, gentlemen, that I told him at our emergency management services meeting that he was improperly enforcing this law. He doesn't return my telephone calls.
So, Mr. Riley, if we hire a towing company and start towing cars that do not have a Bel Air Beach parking permits there, are we liable for any type of damages?
Can I answer a different question first?
Which size shoe do I wear?
I wanted to comment for 45 minutes, so I have several comments. Everything I'm going to say is oriented towards solving problems. That is the absolute objective. So I'm going to segregate the problems into two, two categories. Two things and two things only. So if you wanna make a response, please don't bring in other things. Stick to the two things that I'm going to use as examples. The first one is the buoys, okay? There's a state statute that specifies what you have to do in order to have buoys or replace buoys. And then there are Florida administrative code provisions that further define how you should do that, okay? So that, that's a, I'm establishing factually what the situation is. State law requires that you do certain things. So fundamental thing for me, you should comply with the state law, okay? I am in no way diminishing the safety issue that you have very passionately set forth. But my job's to tell you how to make sure you don't have problems. And one of them is, I can't solve the problem related to somebody that's drunk in a cigarette boat, but I can tell you how to implement a solution consistent with Florida law. And that, to me, is very clear-cut. The city of Bel Air Beach has jurisdiction and the city of Bel Air Shore has another jurisdiction. They do not overlap. Where Bel Air Shore ends, Bel Air Beach begins, and that's up to San Key. So the point that I'm making is, you as the city council can fix the problem within your jurisdiction. And Lynn contacted me last week and asked me to prepare a, an order, a change to the ordinance so it would be consistent with Florida law and consistent with the administrative code. And I, uh, put together the code change and got that back to them in a day and a half. So that has to be, of course, considered by the city council. One of the nuances of state law is that for this type of ordinance change, you have to submit it to the commission for them to review it before it becomes effective. So that was written in to the ordinance change. So Lynn has that. I, I, he hasn't told me this, but I surmise it from what, something he said earlier. I think he's probably already sent it to them to look at, to, for them to at least give us some initial feedback. We're still going to have to, if you wanna go forward with it, go through the procedure of bringing it up before the city council in October and then in November. And then in November, once assuming it's passed, then it's submitted to the commission and they finalize it. If they look at it before you have your meeting in October, which I would hope they would do, then you should, it should be a absolute, they will approve it later on, but, you know, people sometimes act inconsistently. So for purposes of the buoy issue, the solution is being done. And I leave out the discussion about the promance and all that stuff. I don't know that much about that because Lynn did not ask me to get involved heavily in that. I know there's been a lot of communications back and forth. I really don't have much to say on the status of promance. But I do have, tell you that you have a solution waiting in the wings, which is to change your city code. So that's what I would recommend you do. So that, that to me is a solution to that problem. The other city, if they choose to run their jurisdiction differently, then that's up to them. I don't know what mechanism there is legally for the city of Bel Air Beach to make the city of Bel Air Shore do something in relation to buoys within their jurisdiction. Don't know. If, if you press me for a suggestion, I would suggest talk to your state representative or state senator and you, it sounds like you've already done that. I mean, this should be, to me, a pretty easy thing for the cities to work together on. But at this point in time, Bel Air Shore has chosen their path and you, you're trying to choose your path. So that, that's that one issue. I'll go now to the other issue. Prior to you explaining this, I had no idea there were cranes on the lot, okay? Just wasn't aware of it. And I was aware of the film crew months ago and, of course, hoped that that sort of thing wouldn't happen again. But apparently, it, it, something similar happened with respect to the cranes. My suggestion on solving that problem is that the council authorized myself and Lynn to address how to get this resolved with the other city. And if the resolution, I don't know when your next workshop is, but I would assume it's within one to two weeks, that we come back to you and with several options as to how you address it. Part of the reason I suggest you do it that way is, I am not challenging anything that anybody said here this evening. I will take it as you're, you're telling me factually accurate manner what happened. But the appropriate thing to do before anybody starts talking about, let's file a lawsuit, is let's establish factually what the situation is. And I've, I've read the inter-local agreement. I've read the deeds. I've read all that stuff numerous times, but I don't have instant recall and can't tell you all the intricate nuances of that stuff off the top of my head. But between now and when the council next meets for a workshop, I would suggest we, Lynn and I, work on trying to figure out a way to address that specific issue with the use of the parking lot. And again, I'm not diminishing that either. I mean, if it's your, your property and there's something bad goes, goes wrong on your property, then there's always going to be an issue of liability. And the points you've raised are, to me, very legitimate points to raise. But the solutions are establish factually what the situation is and then come back to the council with options. So those are my two recommendations.
Well, could you look into putting a buoy at Sixth and Twelfth Street? If the appeal is successful, they would resort back to the joint permit of 2002, which is Bel Air Beach and Bel Air Shores. Hence, uh, Bel Air Shores would have to submit their own permit to have, I guess, our permit or the joint permit modified.
Is that buoy within the, Bel Air Beach's jurisdiction or their jurisdiction?
Jurisdiction. It's still there.
It's within?
It's in within Bel Air Shore's jurisdiction. Well, it's off, yes, it's in within Bel Air Shore's jurisdiction.
If it's within their jurisdiction, I don't, I don't know what mechanism you have to force them to do something within their jurisdiction.
And the question again is, you know, we're gonna change all the verbiage on ours, which that buoy, I believe, is still under our permit. I think the coordinates is, I'd have to check the coordinates again. I don't have them here, but I think it is. So Bel Air Shores has one buoy then? Okay, what permits have on?
My understanding, it's just one of the buoys. It's, it's the only buoy that's left. So what happens is, like I said, they break away, uh, and how they're put in now, they don't drill them. They put them in on a...
Concrete...
Concrete thing. And going back, trying to find them to put another buoy there, you'd be chasing the wind.
Well, then, Bel Air Shores has one permit or one buoy with no permit. So they're in violation of the F W C F.
It just gets...
Technically, technically, you're right. They are. And, and what is the F W C and that brandy, the attorney doing about that?
Nothing. Frank, let me ask you this, because it's going on 11 o'clock here. What do you want tonight from us? What do you want out of, I mean, we can, we can have an action item tonight, okay? You can ask for something, you know, action-wise, as long as it's not bringing to spending money. We said that was okay. You can have an action item tonight. We can do this as a work session for more information. I don't agree with having Linderings do anything across the street, so I have a problem with that. We just went through that for the first half hour. We're not doing that game again. I have no problem with Fred Riley talking to people across the street. But I gotta recuse myself if that's gonna happen, okay? So I'm not putting any leverage on these people whatsoever. They got perfectly clear. I got a lawsuit. I don't care what you do as the city of Bel Air Beach. Dan Gaddis did a motion. We're not related on this thing. I'm gonna do what I gotta do. I'm gonna get them completely removed as trustees. That's gonna be the end of the game. That's what I'm going for. You can do whatever you want to try and settle it, but it's not gonna change me one bit. Just understand that. Now, I wanna know from you though, I wanna call up a question. What would you like?
The question is, I would like, um, keeping Bel Air Shores as towed. I would like two buoys, one placed at Sixth Street under the submerged lands, as our deed says, and one placed at Twelfth Street.
But what I was hearing is that there's, at least from our legal person, was saying that that might not be possible. So we're asking him to look into this? So we're asking him to do the research to see if it's possible to put a buoy on Sixth and Twelfth?
Provide safety for our residents, yes.
Okay. Now, I think we can do that. So the question before us is, does this council authorize Fred Riley to do some research? Within reason, obviously, you're always reasonable, so within reason, as to, is it possible, given everything, and Mr. Gaddis is the expert here, to put a buoy on Sixth and put a buoy on Twelfth? Given the current conditions, F W C, the rules, the hurricane rules, you name it. We just heard, you know, this is my... just heard, you know, this is mine, there's a lot of stuff here.
Are you asking me, can that be done?
Can you research that, yes?
Of course, I can look into it to determine if it's something that this city can do.
Right.
And the caveat to that is, this city may not be able to make that happen.
And you've said that, and if we can't do it, then I have to step, as much as I want to have safety, I can't authorize us to go out and violate somebody else's sovereign space. I'm not going to do that. Other people might, I won't. But, you know, if you tell us there's any way of doing it, then let's go for it. It is safety and it is our number one priority. I don't think we're asking, I hope we're not asking for too detailed of a legal research thing here, but sometimes these things tend to go crazy, you never know.
The solution is for me to call the attorney that you've communicated with, and I will talk to them. I mean, I've read over the emails back and forth, and you have done a stellar job of trying to figure out how to get something done. And I may hit the same brick wall that you hit, I don't know, but that would be the first call. And I will not spend endless time trying to figure it out. I say again, the starting point is to establish factually what you're trying to do and who has jurisdiction over it. That is the starting point. Meanwhile, you have the proposed ordinance that-
Did you send that to them?
Okay, so it's now in front of them, and I will gladly call the attorney for that, the commission, and talk to her and see if we can expedite them giving us some review of that statute or the ordinance. There's nothing in it that they should reject. I mean, I went meticulously through the code or the statute and the administrative code provision to make sure I was using all the language that they use in both of those two resources. So there's no reason they should reject it, but that's up to them.
And it just has to be noted, though, about those deeds and our access and submerged land, part of that, when you're talking to F W C.
Can I make a comment too? Are you done with the four?
Well, I guess I'm done for now. Thanks.
Before we take that step, wouldn't it be feasible to go ahead and get you to send all these public records that you state, that you have showing all your communications, so we can at least look at something a little bit more than just go and send in our city attorney to do something? I mean, I'd like to see all the documentation that you have, so.
Yes, Patty, so I sent through, except for the appeal, I sent everything through our city account.
Okay, so then you were representing the city versus, I thought I heard you say earlier you did that on your personal account.
On the appeal of the permit.
But the rest of it's been done on the city. Can you send that appeal, Lynn, as well, so that-
I can forward it to Patty.
Okay.
Mr. Bankard, you might want to review the public records, rules, personal lawsuits and public records, so you make your own decision or speak with Fred Riley about that. You don't necessarily have to provide that perhaps, okay? I know mine is a personal lawsuit, it's not part of this, and Fred Riley's already written on that, so there's a memo.
I have nothing to hide.
Okay, I have nothing to hide either, but what you're entitled to is what you're entitled to. With regard to, so we're going to call that question, and with regard to this parking situation, we really don't have much that we can offer you. I will tell you this, and it's going to be extremely cryptic for a reason, okay? By the next time we meet, I might have some more information, and that's all I'm going to say, okay, about this issue, okay? I will know something that's quite important, okay? That's all I'm saying, okay? So, let's, go ahead, Lynn.
As a respective voice, has that question already been asked of F W C, whether we have any standing to ask for a replacement of Bel Air Shores?
Yes, it has.
And what was the response?
No, we don't. But I'm not questioning that, I'm questioning the lots that are deeded to us and the submerged land language, which I believe is not under Bel Air Shores jurisdiction. Because if you read into it, as soon as it goes into the submerged lands, it's actually the Florida-
Yeah, Florida Trust.
Florida Trust. So that's where I believe we have the argument. Plus, that would only protect our residents if Bel Air Shores at Fourth Street wants their people to go out there and get hit by boats.
Frank, have, frame this question for me, please.
Request city attorney to look into installing one buoy at Sixth Street, one buoy at 12th Street, under the language of the deeds that we were granted back in 1944 with the submerged language, the submerged land language, along with the Florida Trust, Public Trust document.
I don't know if I can repeat all of that. That's the question. Does everybody get, Glenn's nodding, everybody understand the question? I'm not going to try and repeat that, okay? So a yes vote will authorize the city attorney to move forward with the investigative process within reason, they'll work with Frank Bankard, who has the information and whatnot, too. It sounds like a lot of it has been put in the public domain already. Okay, so with that, we can do this as a voice vote, all in favor. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? A seven to zero.
No, I'm no.
Six to one. Anybody else opposed? Let the record reflect it, six to one, Rita's vote is the no, okay? Because I want that in the, even though we're doing a voice vote, I want the accuracy of the vote maintained. Everyone else was yes, and that's the no. So passes six to one, so Mr. Riley, you'll move forward. Good luck.
Yes, sir.
Frank, thank you.
Thank you.
Your dedication to the safety of this community is incredible, and I do total admiration. Unfinished business, item 23, do we have any? None. City attorney?
Due to the late hour, I prefer not to give any report this evening.
Okay, city manager?
Yes, Mayor Consul, I just want to give you an update on the sign and bird issue. I asked Ms. Roderick to send me that information at the last meeting. She did send it to me, I contacted these people, Nick Jennings from the Florida Wildlife Commission, and I spoke to him, I also spoke to the Florida Department of Transportation, and I also spoke to Mark Rachel that they contacted. And based on their comments, there is no requirement to do any environmental study, and they, the information they were given by whoever contacted them, and I'm not sure who did contact them, whether it was Deborah Mall or Ms. Roderick, based on the email Mr. Rachel sent me an email saying, thank you for reaching out to me, I don't believe there would be any negative impacts to birds that nest or roost on the intercoastal islands located a thousand feet away. There's a buffer of vegetation and residential development that would obscure any direct line of sight. The F D O T said there's no permit required, they don't do any environmental studies, so whatever was said to these gentlemen, it appears that it wasn't clear, like maybe what the location of the sign or what kind of birds they were. The gentleman from Florida Wildlife Commission told me that there are no endangered birds here. The only thing the F D O T said they would do is for the sea turtles on Gulf Boulevard. So we're not-
Not an issue.
Not an issue. I think the information was just maybe misunderstood or whatever.
So in your opinion, at this point, nothing further investigation is necessary, you could move forward with the installation?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes, based on what they told me.
City council, before we let that go, I just want to ask the city council if anybody has any objection to what the city manager moving forward with this. It doesn't matter whether you were for or against the sign, there's no permit issued, the sign passed. Does anybody have any problems with him moving forward? Please move forward.
Okay. I told you at the work session, just want to remind everybody, because this meeting's taped, that we did retain our 20% reduction in the National Flood Insurance Program for the citizens and with assistance from Kyle and Mark B participating in some things that we got some extra points for, that was very positive and I appreciate their help. We talked about the Conoverir funds already. The telephone system, we received an email on the 17th of August telling us that our phone system is obsolete and they weren't going to maintain it any longer. So I reached out to two or three companies and got prices for the equipment from $720 to $5,700. The phone system currently would change over to, it's called VoIP, Voice Over Protocol.
Voice Over Protocol.
Okay. And it looks like the most cost-effective thing to do is go through Verizon instead of these specialty phone companies. Verizon will give us the equipment for the phones for $700, they won't charge us any installation, and then we'll pay a monthly fee for each of the lines, which should be covered with the maintenance agreement that we previously had that's in the budget, we'll be able to cover that with that cost, so we'll, you know, unless you have an issue with that, we'll just move forward on that, because it's like-
Your total anticipated cost, our anticipated cost of the new system?
For the equipment, $720, okay? For the monthly cost, it's $25 a line. We're going to reduce some of the lines, because there's phones in places that you walk across the room and get there's another phone, so we're going to eliminate some. We're going to end up with nine phones, and that'll cost us about $245 a month for those phones. So, for the service, not the phones, and they'll install them for us, so.
Can I ask a question? We currently have on a lieutenant, is that, does that include?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Lynn, you have adequate bandwidth, because you are, we will be using bandwidth now with this.
Yeah, we, based on what Verizon has told me and the two phone companies that other that came out and looked, I think we're okay. And if we have to increase it, we've got to do that. They're not anticipating transferring, changing our internet provider, which is Spectrum right now. But we've got Verizon equipment in the building and we are, we do have Verizon lines in here.
Are we going to be able to trunk all the numbers over, are we not going to have to change numbers?
No, we're going to try to trunk them over.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. It's, the phones will be eliminated, we had one in the art records room, one in the kitchen, one in the break room, two in the kind of reception area, well, 10 feet apart, we don't really need to, and the, what's that other room called? Archive room. We're going to eliminate those phones, but.
I'm curious as to where Spectrum, did they close also?
Spectrum doesn't provide equipment.
They don't provide?
I went to them first, thinking, oh, maybe they do this, but they don't, and I verified that here today with another person. Evidently, they don't know who they've called and talked to, because they called me, tried to talk to me about it. So I've given you the countywide planning rules, amendments, that's something that the county sent out, and also the legislative action agenda from the Florida League of Cities. Probably the biggest thing on there for us is short-term rentals at this point, and, you know, they're going to support some things, trying to allow us maybe to amend our ordinance in the future that doesn't hurt us. The last thing, or second to last thing, Neighborly Services sent you all a letter asking for donation. We've done that in some years, in some years we haven't. We have one individual that uses that service. What's the council's pleasure on that? Do you want to donate or not?
Have we previously donated?
We didn't last year, but the year before we did. And maybe that was because of the pandemic, and maybe they didn't send us anything. But, you know, we do give money to the, what's that called? The sheriffs, you know, where they take the homeless.
Right, the homeless.
So, but we do have budgeted money if you like.
How much are they looking for?
He didn't really say this time. In the past, we'd give them like $1,000.
I'm okay with that, since one of our citizens uses the services.
Yeah, in the letter, they told me that it was 20, what was it, 20, it was like $2,200 or $2,300 in services that our resident uses, actually. It was $2,167.55 that our resident uses. They received $281 meals and one transportation in the previous 12 months.
I don't know what to say. I mean, you know, we're not a charitable organization, we're not a for-profit, so we're giving away taxpayer money, yet it's a very good cause, so I don't know, flip a coin on this, I don't know what to say.
What's it, what's that, some?
What's everybody else like?
I'm good with it.
Anybody got an issue?
It's the regenerative.
I didn't hear anybody say they had an issue. Citizens? No issue. Go ahead.
And the last thing I've asked, and you priced on the legal bill, I asked Fred to look into an attorney general's opinion on public records and fees. I think it's important that we resolve this once and for all. Elected officials get paid for public records requests, or anybody gets paid for public records requests, and what that fee is. And Fred, Fred and I looked into it a little bit, but we're going to, I just want to let you know, we want to settle this, yes or no, and if so.
That's good. So. Okay, thank you. Any questions for city manager? Citizens? Thank you. City clerk?
No.
Nothing, no comments? City council comments? I don't, let's see, September is nine, start with, I'm going to guess one.
Yes, really all I have to say is I just want to ask everyone in our community to keep the families and the victims of 9/11 in their thoughts and prayers, since that anniversary date is coming up. You know, we normally did a moment of silence in the past forum, so since that, we didn't do that this evening, I just want to make sure that I mention it. Thank you.
Rita, I just want you to know, I was going to mention that also, and I didn't want to intrude on, particularly with Josh's widow here. I would like to hold a moment of silence at the end here, that is absolutely something we've never, we have a resolution that we passed, so we'll do one before we leave here, if that's okay with everyone. Let's go to Gerald.
No comments.
Okay. I think you're next.
No comment.
Okay. Frank?
No comment.
Robin?
No comment.
Dave?
I don't know, it's been a long night. I do have one comment. I've talked about this before, and I think I'd like to add to the next agenda or work session about what to do about these dilapidated boat lifts, docks, boats that have not been moved in years, things growing out of them. It was a rude awakening, whenever our neighbor's boat fell in the water, and then the storm was approaching, and then the, I think they had dock issues, then they tried to fish the boat out themselves, and it wound up upside down for over a week in our area. And it's all because they had a boat that they don't use, they don't care about, everything's rusted, and the cable eventually snapped. It's a hazard, and I see them all over the place, and I think maybe it's time to look into doing something about it.
Dave, to your point, not only we have that, I'm noticing there are more boats in the traffic lanes, and, you know, not necessarily in the channels, but they're all over the place now. And we've talked about this, we've talked about what other cities have done, but that's a problem too. So maybe we just deal with all of these problems in one shot, if you want me to latch on to what you have there.
That's fine.
I think we need to deal with it, because it's going to come this way. I'm seeing them, I'm seeing them a lot.
I'm not seeing as many here yet, but I lost the way.
Yeah, and they're getting more.
The brays, they're, yeah.
And I've seen them break- And I've seen them break loose too and being against the walls and stuff and it's.
Absolutely.
So let's deal with it.
Is, one question. Work session can have it right after the special meeting on?
You know, I was going to say, do we need a work session? We had a real long session tonight, I wasn't going to call one unless everybody else wanted one. I certainly have some items that I could put on, but I, you know, we really did double duty tonight, so if you wanted, council, you got it, so just let me know. It would be after the 505 meeting, we should take hold of about 15 minutes, so.
If we're already here, I'm up for it, if others are, if no one's in the mood for it, we can push it out. It's still hurricane season, this is a good time to be talking about this because somebody or something's going to get hurt.
Council, what do you want to do? Work session? Yes, yes, yes. Everybody good? Okay, so after the 505, I'll have a few items. Well, Patty, what would be the deadline for getting items on the agenda?
Wednesday.
This Wednesday?
No, the Wednesday.
Today's Wednesday?
The 4th.
15th, okay? So that's the deadline to Patty by close of business, okay? Close of business, right? That's good? Okay, all right. Dave, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
I'm last. I did want to recognize the folks with 9/11, 20 years ago, horrible, horrible day in New York City and the Pentagon and in Shanksville, Pennsylvania. So I'm going to ask that we adjourn, but before we adjourn, we're going to do the moment of silence, so I'm not going to call you back and say, let's do a motion to adjourn, so let's, do we have the motion to adjourn? Everybody agreement? Yes, yes, now let's rise and do a moment of silence and then thank you everyone for coming. Thank you, everyone.